President.
Counselor David L. Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Barbara Casey?
Here.
Counselor Vincent Howell?
Here.
Counselor David A. Libardi Jr.?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do I have a call?
Thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Romano, would you do the pledge of allegiance, please?
Moment of silence.
Moment of silence, sir.
Moment for you for healing touches that were asked in all city councilors and constituents. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of your call?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Libardi?
The agenda as is.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Libardi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Libardi Jr., a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion, fair.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is public input, and we have no one for public input at this time. The next item is discussion items. Item number one, award request for bid number 2018-16 for the Bradner fill line projects to Hays Plumbing and Heating, and we have Ms. Maria Gobert.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councillors.
Madam Manager.
This past December, we went ahead and advertised in the Las Vegas Optic and in the Albuquerque Journal for the Bradner fill line project. That is the water line that will be installed that takes water from either off the river or from Peterson or from Story and puts water into Bradner. Currently, our configuration is an inlet and an outlet that's in the same location. It's a poor design, results in poor water quality, and increases the cost along with treatment. So installation of this line will improve our water quality and the processes for the system. This is funded by a Water Trust Board grant loan of 7525. It was 1.3 million that we received from Water Trust Board. The bid came back at a little over a million, so it's well within our funding amounts. We had two companies, Hays and AUI, both very, very good companies. Hays did come back with the lower bid, and our engineers reviewed the bids, and there were no issues or concerns with their bid, and they are qualified to do the work. I request the council consider being able to award to Hays.
Questions, comments?
How many, Madam Mayor, may I?
Counselor Casey?
How many projects is Hays currently working on?
Hays is finishing right now the Cinder Road project. They are on hold with the Story project, the Story line leak, because it is currently underwater. Those are the two current projects they have with the city. So they're finishing up one, and the other one, based on my understanding of our future weather, they may not be able to work on Story until late this year, which is a good thing. That means we have water.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Counselor Howell?
Ms. Gobert and Ms. Gallegos?
Yes.
What is the projected start date for once we, if, once this gets approved?
We, usually takes about a month for us to go through the contract process and get everything signed, and then they'll start mobilizing soon after that. So once this is approved in mid-February, mid to late March, we should have the contracts completed, and they should be able to, we expect them to be able to start. They're already currently coordinating. They, they knew they came in with a low bid, and we asked them to start talking to the contractor that's doing the rehab, because both of those companies and engineers will need to work together so that one project doesn't impact the other. They are interrelated.
Excuse me.
So I, to answer your question shorter, sorry, I expect it within a month to a month and a half that they'll mobilize.
It's exciting to get Bradner going.
Yes, and this project will be a much shorter than the Bradner rehab project. We are giving it till the end of the year to coincide with the rehab, so that the two companies can coordinate, but it, this is a quicker project.
Could you, I don't know if it's appropriate for you to do this, but give us an understanding of what Representative Salazar said to us in regards to the reauthorization of the funding?
That's for the Bradner rehab project.
Right.
When, yes, Representative Salazar did let myself know that he had submitted a request for the reauthorization, which is our request to extend the Bradner funding for the rehabilitation project, which currently is scheduled to expire June 30th, and that was our request and the state engineer's request to our legislators to extend it to the end of the year, to give us enough time to make sure that the project falls within the timeframe to be completed under the funding. And he did say he submitted that request. It still has to go before the governor for her approval.
Yeah, okay.
And I believe the senator also is supporting it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you, what happened to the groundbreaking ceremony publicity?
I know that we provided the information to Mr. Einer, and I believe he wrote something up. I don't know, I believe he submitted it to...
Mr. Einer?
The Optic.
Okay, because if the Optic isn't working with us, we have other means and methods. Just blast it. That should work. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have one.
Counselor Casey?
Thank you. In the supporting documents that were in our packet, there are documents that refer to the contract with Souda, not with Souda Miller, but with CES?
Yes.
And maybe this question is better directed to the city manager, Gallegos. How much do we pay on the contract for CES for the year?
That, there's a, there's a fee that's attached to the individual, the pricing, and so they do, and I believe it's 1% of the contract that they, that they do charge to the agency unless there's some kind of a discount or if the contractor, the contractor gets ahold of us. Am I correct?
And in this case, the 1% of the CES contract is with the engineer, which is not the $1 million project. It's a much, it's just the engineering concert...
It's with Souda Miller, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, so it's the observation and construction phase services. We needed to go through CES to be able to continue with that engineer, and it's a small portion of the project.
It's actually 161,000 is...
For all of it, correct.
What we talked about.
But I think that's probably the 150 portions.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question.
What is, another question?
No, I don't have any more.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
The next item on the agenda is resolution number 1806 for submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority.
Ms. Gobert?
Madam Mayor, Councillors, Madam Manager, the city is moving forward with the acquisition of the storage in Story to be able to fund that project. The city's been looking at, we've been looking at going through NMFA. To continue with the process of NMFA, we must submit an application, and that requires approval from the council, a resolution from the council authorizing us to move forward with that application. This request is, in your documents, it is for 4.57 million. That could be reduced because there's a $410,000 portion that is set up to pay for the reserve, the debt reserve for the very last year, and if the city is not required to have that debt reserve, then the loan will go down by about $410,000, which we do expect, but we do need to plan for the higher number, and most likely will be lower.
Questions, comments?
None, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Casey?
Thank you. On the application for the loan, which is dated February the 8th of this year, it lists Mrs. Gallegos as a contact person, and I'm just, just a little bit concerned because I was hoping that maybe it would say Anne Marie Gallegos, comma, interim city manager there, to clarify that Mrs. Gallegos is not the acting finance director at this point in time.
And I'll be glad to have, have, talk to Paul Cassidy and have that updated.
Okay, thank you, because I don't want to have any kind of legal problems, being that there is a strict prohibition of you doing two jobs at the same time.
Well, we actually have it in the minutes where she was confirmed and where Donna was confirmed.
Yes, I know, but whoever looks at this may not know that, and so that was my mistake.
Mr. Cassidy does know that.
We can add in that language.
We can add the language.
Okay. Clarify it for you. Okay, I have another question. Some of the questions in the, in the application says, who will hold the title to the line where the project is to be located? And it says City of Las Vegas. The project to be located is in Story Lake. So do we own the land at Story Lake?
Are we talking about D?
Who holds the title to the land where the project is to be located?
But we will own the easement.
Exactly.
Which is, and if...
Okay, so it refers, so...
It refers to what we're, what we're acquiring and that we will own that. If we put Story down, then, we can't, because we're, we would be doing something for Story, so...
That's what I was...
Correct. It, it is correct to say the City of Las Vegas will basically own what we're purchasing.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, how much will we have to pay on this loan yearly until 2028?
There's the debt service that's attached, and the, the first payment is 390,000, very close, between 390 to 425,000 per year annually, and so, and that's over an 11-year period.
So we already owe approximately 22 million, money that we owe in general?
In jet...
You're talking about debt service?
The total, the total debt service, yes.
Yes.
Yes, counselor.
And so this will bring it up to 27 million?
22. The, the part for utilities is, I believe it's 12,000, 12 million, excuse me, plus, of course, the 4 million, 500,000 that we currently are going to be getting into with NMFA.
Okay, so then that'll be 16 million?
Yes. Yes, counselor. The, the other part is, of course, the general fund debt service. Am I correct, ma'am?
Yes.
I think it's a pretty question.
Okay. And it's going to be paid from capital outlay GRT?
It'll be, it will be. It's a water GRT that was dedicated in, I believe it was 1998. We had some water bonds, water improvement bonds that were paid off, and so this has been very good for the city. We've used any of the GRT that we have collected. We've used it for various projects, and so it will not affect the water rates in any way or affect any of the water funds. We will be collecting the GRT and then, of course, passing it on to NMFA.
Okay. And how much do we normally collect?
Close to 600 to 650,000.
Okay, so that'll cover probably the yearly payments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And now that you mentioned the, we collect the money, and then from there it goes to where? Because that intercept agreement states that...
It might be, they may...
The money will go directly to the New Mexico Finance Authority.
They may, they may want to do an intercept agreement. Some of them do, some of them don't, and so I, I prefer that they do an intercept agreement and they take it off of the total GRT. It's that much easier, and it facilitates that much, it facilitates it a lot easier, and that way they'll collect, we, they'll collect the GRT, and then they will have an intercept agreement with tax and rent.
Okay, so next week, the intercept agreement is a part of the, of the contract, so we would be approving that also altogether.
Subject to any updates or any changes, then I think Maria and I will bring them back to you if there is any, any amendments to it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
There shouldn't be, though.
Okay.
It, we've reviewed it, and it does look, it does look like we're ready to go with it. We may have a couple of changes later on, but we would certainly bring that amendment back to mayor and councilman and keep you, keep you updated on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, would be a pleasure for you.
Consent.
Consent. Let's go on.
The next item is the publication of the ordinance number 18-01 to enter into a loan agreement with the New Mexico Finance Authority, and we have Ms. Gobert.
Mayor, Councillors, Madam Manager, and clerk, I believe this is to request to publish?
Correct.
Okay. So this is a request to publish ordinance number 1801 to allow us to enter into a loan agreement with NMFA. This is required by NMFA to do the, to do this by ordinance, so this, this request would allow us to publish and then come back at next month's session and hold a public hearing and then approve at that time. And this would be for the loan for the purposes of the previously discussed story, storage acquisition.
Questions, comments?
4.5 million.
Questions, comments?
No more than 4.57.
Did you want the floor, Counselor Howell?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, what is the pleasure, counsel?
Consent.
Thank you, Ms. Gobert.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of contract between the City of Las Vegas and Superior Ambulance, and we have Mr. Billy Montoya, fire chief, and...
Yes, I was going to ask counsel if you would like me to introduce Chris Archuleta as the CEO, in case you guys have any questions for him as well.
Please, sir.
Come up and start to let, have that seat, sir.
Oh, thank you.
So, good evening again, everyone.
Good evening.
Madam manager. So, what we did was, late last year, we came, we did send out the RFP process for emergency medical services. We came in December to ask for permission to enter into negotiations. Since then, we have entered into negotiations with Superior Ambulance, and all attorneys have reviewed their documentation. We come to an agreement. The price will stay at the 175, and there will be three dedicated ambulances strictly for the City of Las Vegas. I know Counselor Howell had a question in regards to the Dalby issue, and I have a couple letters for everyone who would like to have seen. I sent Mr. Archuleta the request and the concern, and he's responded with a memorandum telling his people exactly what is required of them for letters, and that's the one I'm using as well. So the contract, like I said, went to all our attorneys, came up with a final draft for you guys to see if we can agree on moving forward with it, and if you guys have any questions for myself or Mr. Archuleta, or if you have anything to add with Chris Archuleta. Will entertain any questions?
Questions, comments?
On the contract or...
On the contract or any questions about the contract?
Okay, I have questions.
Okay, Counselor, Casey?
Thank you. On the contract, under response time, does, you know, it says that they have to respond in seven minutes, which I think is, you know, pretty quick and reasonable, but my concern is that it also states that if there's something that is creating a problem for the ambulance to get to where it needs to go, for example, no signage on the streets or no lights on the streets, does that create a liability risk for the city? Because the city is responsible for putting up signage and lights, and I know that in some parts of town, there are no lights, lights that have been out for quite a long time, and some places that you can't find, you know, the street because there aren't any signs on those streets, and people just, if they live here forever, they kind of know where it is, and they can give a landmark and say it's across the street from, you know, Alstons or whatever, but if you don't know, and the ambulance is supposed to get there and move a certain amount of time and do it 90% of the time, then I'm just wondering, how is the city going to handle it so that everybody is working together and making sure that everything is as it should be, so that the ambulance company can perform their duties the way they're specified in the contract?
Okay. Did you want to defer that question to Danny?
As far as the signage, we are working on it. We are ordering them now. We do have a lot of the west side that we've started working on, ordering those signs, so we are going to start putting them out, and if there's anything that there's need, we're calling them, closing them.
And I think that that is some, I believe Counselor Howell was in yesterday requesting signage as well as lights, and those are, those are issues that we've been working on with public facilities, and I don't know, Billy, if you have any other issues that have we, I guess we need to just ask if we've had these type of issues where they, they have not been able to identify where or how...
Right now, I don't have any issues that have come to my desk yet, and a very good question, because I relate to the, to the sign issue as well with my units responding to emergency traffic. However, we do have an agreement with Superior Ambulance that they have GPS in all of the units.
Exactly.
So they type in the address, and we go with those coordinates as well, kind of a backup to a back.
Okay. Any other questions?
I still have two more.
Okay, continue.
Okay. On the demographic data that is required in the contract, and this question is for Mr. Archuleta. Do you normally collect that anyway?
Yes, counselor, we do. We collect that, and we have that on record. What we're going to do now is formulate a process so that chief will get what he needs and can present that to the council.
Okay. And you have reviewed the contract and agreed with the terms of the contract?
Yes.
Okay. I had a question on amendment, Article 16 on the amendments. It was on page 8 of Article 16. The last line says something specific that the contract can't be amended, changed, or amended except by written instrument signed by parties. To me, that's not specific enough, because it doesn't specify all parties, meaning both sides, the city and Superior Ambulance, so I'm wondering if we can just add the word "all" or something to show that you're both parties, so that, you know, it's not, you know, you say, well, you know, my city manager signed it, and the mayor signed it, and so-and-so signed it, but Superior Ambulance might not know, or he might sign it, and we don't know, if it doesn't specify specifically.
We can, we can certainly add that.
Very good judgment.
Yes.
And Mr. Archuleta, I want to commend you for recommending that your ambulance personnel take classes in Spanish. I think that's really wonderful, and thank you for that. We do have a lot of Spanish-speaking people.
Correct.
And I'm glad that you are addressing that need, and thank you so very much for that.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Any questions? Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gallegos, chief, and Mr. Archuleta. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chief, for addressing the concern on Dalby.
Most definitely.
And Mr. Archuleta, thank you for responding to that. I hope...
We understand the concern.
Yes, thank you. I just have a question. I heard you, the chief say you had GPS system in all your ambulances.
Yes.
Now, there was an incident that I heard of at the state hospital where ambulance 911 was called, and the ambulance was not able to locate the, the building that was at the state hospital. Do you, are you aware of that, or...
I haven't been made aware of that, no. I would have to check into it and find out the details about it. If you know the approximate time, I can research that.
You can find out. The reason why I ask is because, now, this is just what I heard. I'm not sure of the details, but one of our customers at Better Stop, her granddaughter passed away because of that. That's what she said. So I, you know, I hope you can look into that, because the state hospital has many buildings over there, and if you don't have the actual address of that particular building...
Correct.
You know...
And Counselor Howell, if I can, I don't need to interject, but it might shed some light on the, on the subject at hand. Usually, when a call comes in at Medical Behavioral Health, we have security stand by and meet at, right at Gallegos Road, so that way they can direct the, whether it be the fire department or the ambulance service, straight to the building, so that way that technical issue doesn't happen. But that's something that usually they, the state police dispatch.
Okay. I just, you know, I feel sorry for the family, just for your awareness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, in this contract, there is a quarterly meeting that, that you will be having with the ambulance services. Am I correct?
Yes. And we'll discuss any topics like this, any issues that may arise, so that way we can try to nip it in the bud as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? What is the pleasure, counsel?
Consent.
You want?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is changing out the existing hangar door at the Las Vegas Municipal Airport and replace high voltage switch with a low voltage push-button switch. We have Mr. Danny Gurulee, and we also have Mr. Aragon, John Aragon, with us.
Madam Mayor, council members.
Welcome.
Madam manager, we're here to seek the approval of the existing hanging door, the hangar door, to get it replaced, because it's in need, it's, I guess the last that he can recall is when it was put up, was back in the early 80s, if anything. So the wiring is frailling, which is a cable, they're moving from the cable system into a strapping system that's supposed to help the door, make it a lot more efficient and a lot more safer, because the one that we have now is dangerous, actually. I mean, it's a heavy door. I mean, the one that we're going to have, it should be a lot more efficient, open straight up instead of trying to pull itself to the side, and it should fit opening. The one that we have now, it doesn't fit the opening.
If I may, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this door is actually a safety hazard. They have been unable to open it or close it because of the wiring and the bad infrastructure, the poor infrastructure that we have currently. We did an investigative report. This is something that should be replaced as quickly as possible. The, the proposal in front of you is, Daniel...
It's, it's going to be for the whole hangar door is what it's going to be. It's going to be replacing the hangar door, which is 58 feet long by 16 feet, and it's going to come with all the hardware included and stuff like that. As far as where it says that the plaster and stuff like that, that plaster is already, it's broken off already and stuff like that, so they're not going to replace that. They're just going to tie into the existing that's there, and it should all be left to go afterwards.
This will take, this project will take approximately three weeks to, to complete. We will have the equipment that's delivered will be coming from out of state. It's, I believe it's in three parts. Am I correct?
No.
Or is it one part?
See, this, they've got to ship it from out of state, because it's a specialty item, so they have it made somewhere else, so they'll be bringing it. That's why the cost is so high in the delivery and that. And then as far as the employees, they are going to be, stay here for the three-week project that they anticipate that it's going to take, and when they do remove the door, it's going to be taken apart in four sections, if I'm not mistaken. They told me it's going to take apart, and we are going to end up keeping the material ourselves, because a lot of the material is still good now. So we'll be utilizing the material whenever we need to use it, and we'll end up in that.
Okay. Questions, comments? Counselor Casey?
Thank you. So, in my packet that I received at home, and I'm looking through the packet here on this computer, there's a list of six vendors that, price agreement with GSD, the General Services Department of the State of New Mexico Purchasing Division, and, but I don't see any bid documents. Were the putouts bid? How, did you purchase it?
We basically just went with, because the overhead door has actually been doing a lot of work for us here in the city, and they do good work, so that's why we went with them. We could actually count on their work to, you know, what we need.
So it was not put out to bid?
No, it's an SPD contract is what it is. And I...
Could you explain to the council how they work, please?
The SPD contracts work, it's a, it's a contract through State Purchasing Division. They have already gone out with their, for their proposals, and so they have identified three or four, possibly five different vendors that we can go through. Overhead Door is a company that we have gone with on many occasions for different projects. We utilize them, and we're, and we're happy with their product. We have been, we worked with them as far as the, the electrical work, which, the electrical work does need to be updated prior to them coming in to install the door. We're looking at 77,000. Unfortunately, we have a fund called the Airport Construction Fund, and only so many dollars, these dollars are very specific to the Airport Construction Fund, but it is... But it is the State Purchasing Division contract.
I figured when I saw the list.
Yes, ma'am. And I can get you the contract number if you'd like to see it.
Okay. And are we going to get a hydraulic door or a bi-fold door?
That one I didn't specify, but we are going to get the bi-fold, and it's going to be motor-driven. It's a safer door.
And what kind of material will it be made out of? Because they had some that were glass, some are metal, some are...
And we are going to get the Propanabunas.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no other questions.
Okay. I have some questions. Could you explain the exclusions and the clarifications on the contract, please?
Oh, that's the one right there. That's the one, see, that's what I was telling you about. Everything's included in the door, so all the hardware and everything is going to be included in that door. The only thing that they're not going to do is the plaster on the top, because the building is old, but it's still usable. They still use it a lot, actually. They do have planes in there that they use it. And that plaster has been, it's in the inside, in the interior, so they don't have to worry about any moisture or anything getting into the building. But they're not going to re-plaster it. They're just going to go off the existing that's there.
Okay, so how will that affect the warranty?
The warranty's still going to be the same. They're going to give us the one-year warranty, which is the labor and the one-year manufacturing warranty. And that's all the warranty they give us with it.
Okay, but on the exclusion, it talks about structural preparation, including wiring, conduit, and final line voltage.
And see, the wiring ourselves, our electrician, he was already going to, has all the wiring and stuff like that, and it was already agreed on that we are going to do the wiring, because it is, I don't know, it's, the wiring is old, so it does have to get updated. And we are going to update it up to the point where they're going to put the low voltage in, and from there, they are going to hook up the low voltage themselves. They're going to be providing all that. And I tried to get him to go ahead and put all that into this, and when I was emailing him back and forth as far as how it's broken down, and he sent me what you got there, but that's where I'm here to answer your questions.
I'm sorry?
I'm here for your questions. I'm sorry about that. But I did try to get him to get the breakdown on how, what they provided and stuff like that. But they are providing the whole door, the low voltage. All we're going to do is just run the wire to it. That's it.
What about the permitting?
The permits, we don't need any permits for this. No, it's going to just be, just a hangar door is all it is.
Okay, because it does say under clarifications, any permits required are to be provided by others.
Yeah, that'll be by us if we did need the permits, since it's in city property.
And if we do need to do, what we'll do is, once, if this is approved by Mayor and Council, the next phase will be, what, what specifically do we need? Do we need any permitting? And we will look into that and acquire the permitting that is needed. The electrical work will need to be upgraded, because that, the electrical work currently is, would not be able to withstand the new door. And that would, that's really why we have to do the upgrading of the electrical.
Okay, so the structure, the framing and structure, correct?
Yes. And what I'd like to do is, later on, if we do have any kind of, if we, if we have any, any balances or anything of that sort, perhaps we can work on the structure and try to get the, and try to upgrade it to the point where we wouldn't, we'd be able to minimize some of those construction costs with our own staff.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
I have one more, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Howell?
She has one.
Would you have raised your question before?
Well, I don't really have a question, but I'm glad, first of all, to see that that door is going to be replaced. It's really 30, from 1930s, you said?
It's in the early 80s is the...
It's real beautiful, though. That's a long time.
Okay. That's good. Mr. Aragon, I just wanted to ask you a question since you're in charge of the airport. Have we realized the fly-in yet?
Yes, we have. And that will be happening this weekend.
Oh, it is this weekend?
Route 66 fly-in will be coming in this weekend. We're expecting approximately 20 aircraft. They should start coming in between 2:30 and 3 o'clock. They're going to fly in. We're going to deal with them as they come in, and then they, they kind of arrange their own ride into town to the plaza. They're going to spend the night here. And then on Sunday morning, we're going to show up, open the building, and help them on their way. So that did, that did happen.
Are you doing any marketing with the community to let them see all this or...
As far as I know, the only marketing we've done is put flyers out and word of mouth.
Well, we're not getting a lot of feedback from the optics, so we can't exactly rely on them, you know, to publish anything at this point in time, so thank you. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, where's the money coming from?
It's from the Airport Construction Fund, and it's used only specifically for airport construction projects.
Thank you.
And it's, it's there, it has been there, waiting for some of these projects that need to be completed, and so there wouldn't be any kind of matching or anything from anywhere other than the Airport Construction Fund.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions? What is the pleasure, Counsel?
Consent.
Thank you. This is most needed.
Thank you.
I do not believe we have need for executive session at this time.
No.
Madam Mayor? Can I move up the adjournment?
Do you have a second? There's a motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Counselor Howell?
Before I...
You have to vote. We'll call for the question. You can make your statement later if you wish, but you have to. Go ahead.
But if I, but if we're adjourned, then I can't ask the question.
But yeah, but once you have a motion and a second, we have to call for the question.
Okay.
Roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Omero?
Yes.
Counselor Olivari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Omero, and Counsel Olivari Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion, please.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's your question.
What is the concern of the optic? You had mentioned that...